That is our prayer. But we confess that too often we want to be like you, but not pay the price. Help us, Lord, to be willing to pay whatever price that is required to be like you. We think of brothers and sisters around the world who are paying the ultimate price to be like you, and we pray for them, we thank you for them, thank you for their faithfulness. And we ask, Holy Spirit, that you will support them in their hour of deepest need. And we, in this culture, so comfortable, so little persecution, help us, oh Lord, to be like you in everything we do and say. Help us now as we study your word. Let our study help us along that road to be like you. Amen. Well, we're actually going to get into Leviticus tonight. But before we do, I want to remind you of the structure of the covenant that we've talked about before. Exodus 19 to 24, which we call the Book of the Covenant, is the basis. Here are the terms of the covenant. This is what we're going to do, this is what God's going to do. And the goal of the covenant is God's presence in our midst. That's what it's all about. And as I shared with you, that's out of chronological order. They didn't finish the tabernacle as soon as Moses came down off the mountains. It really took another 11 months for that to happen. But God has put it forward here so that we know where we're headed. The goal is God's presence in us, among us, with us. Now then, the question that arises is, how could that be possible? How could the Holy God live among, live in people who have a fallen nature? And the answer is atonement. Atonement is the means by which God can offer grace. I want to say it again, I'll say this many times, but I want to drive it home. The cross is not the means whereby we make God forgive us. No, God forgives us for love. God forgives us by grace. God forgives us freely. He invited them into His arms in Egypt, before that in Abraham. But the question is how? And the answer is atonement. And ultimately, and I think I confused some of you last week when I quoted Revelation, which says, "Christ was slain before the foundation of the earth." Not actually, not physically, not as the man Jesus Christ of Nazareth, but in the heart of God. And because that's a fact, that ultimate atonement is the fact, God can offer grace to all the people of the Old Testament. But what's happening here is, we're now nailing that down. How is it that people who want to keep the covenant can live with God and not be destroyed? Atonement, atonement. So I want to show you a verse from Jeremiah. "This is what the Lord of heaven's armies, the God of Israel, says: Take your burnt offerings and your other sacrifices and eat them yourself. When I led your ancestors out of Egypt, it was not burnt offerings and sacrifices that I wanted from them." Well, wait a minute, God, you've got nine chapters here. "This is what I told them: Obey me, and I will be your God, and you will be my people. Do everything as I say, and all will be well." I didn't want your sacrifices, I wanted you! And your sacrifices are an indication that I've got you. God doesn't want you to go to church. He wants your heart, and if he has it, going to church will be fun. And so it is here. God doesn't want these sheep and goats, but he wants them. And they need to offer those things as a symbol of their own hearts and as a way of training their hearts. I said earlier, the pagan view of sacrifice and the Hebrew view of sacrifice are very different. On the surface, it looks like they're doing the same things. But the pagan believes that by doing these sacrifices, he or she can make the God do something for them. The biblical believer knows that you don't make God want to do something for you. He wants to do things for you. If your heart is in the right place, and you demonstrate that your heart is in the right place by these kinds of things. You with me? Okay, it's with that understanding that we need to launch into this. Now, the first that we have are the sacrifices, and we have five of them. The whole burnt offering, the grain offering, the peace offering, the sin offering, and the guilt offering. And you notice that I have put the grain offering and the peace offering together, and we'll talk about that. But there are five offerings, and those are appearing in chapters 1 to 6. Then, in the remainder of chapter 6 and chapter 7, we have summary and further instructions. If you are doing study, I know one of you is, thank you. Keep looking ahead to chapters 6 and 7, where you've got more information about each of these offerings. Then, you have the officiants, the intermediaries, the priests, who are helping people. People, ideally, are going to see God through these people, and God is going to reveal himself through these people. I've used the illustration in the past, let me remind you of it, and that marker is alive, all right. The priests are to be a window, a window through whom God can shine on his people, a window through whom the people can see God. But there's something about a window, it only works if it's transparent. It only works if you're not aware it's there. But across history, the priests wanted to be stained glass windows. They wanted the glory for themselves, and we see that almost at the outset here. But chapters 8 and 9 are given over to these intermediaries, the atonement that is necessary for them to function. Then, of course, we have the tragedy of Nadab and Abihu. And as I said, the conclusion to it all is in chapters 16 and 17. We've got a parenthesis in chapters 10 through 15, because they didn't get it. And the day of atonement, yom kippur. Yom is day, kippur is atonement, the day of covering, which is, as I said, what covering means. So, we begin with the whole burnt offering. Did you notice? There's no stated purpose. There's no purpose given for the whole burnt offering. Now, who gives it? Anybody. And there is nothing about guilt? When anyone among you brings an offering? Anybody. Not the priests, not the officials, anybody. And you can bring it morning and evening. Now, here in Leviticus, you would think it's only morning. But Exodus, chapter 29, verses 38 to 42, tell us it's morning and evening. "And the fire has to be carefully watched to be kept burning all night." This is continual, morning and evening. And what is the offering? Down to verse 10. "If the offering is a burnt offering from the flock, from either the sheep or the goats..." Again, this is unusual, you can bring an animal from the herd or the flock, the goat herd or the sheep flock. "...you are to offer a male without defect." This is the word that we've talked about before, the word tammim. These three consonants refer to something that is whole, that is entire, that is perfect. Not flawless, doesn't say that, but it has to be everything that that sheep or that goat is supposed to be. And that's the word that is used of believers later in the Bible. It's used already in Genesis 17. Some of you are in my Sunday School class, and you've heard this till you're sick of it, but you're going to keep hearing it. "Walk before me and be tammim." Be everything that you were ever supposed to be. What a wonderful, wonderful promise. Just walk with God, and you will be all you were meant to be. Fifty-six times this word appears in relation to sacrificial animals. Do you think God's making a point? Yes, yes. You notice that there is an accommodation to ability in verse 14. "If the offering to the Lord is a burnt offering of birds, you are to offer a dove or a young pigeon." That's what Joseph and Mary were doing when they brought Jesus to be circumcised. They were bringing a whole burnt offering. But they were poverty-stricken refugees. They couldn't afford a sheep or a goat, all they had was a pigeon. God says that's good enough. That's good enough. Yes?
My virgin says, in verse 2, it says cattle, it references cattle.
"The herd or the flock," so it could be a bull, it could be a goat, it could be a ram, or as here, could be a bird. So that is the point, that in many other cases, it will be specified. You have to bring this kind of an animal, not here. As I said to you, if you are working through these questions, think about the implications. Who slaughters it? The offerer. "You are to lay your hand on the head of the burnt offering, and it will be accepted on your behalf," here it is, "to make atonement for you." Covering. That's what happens when the blood is sprinkled on the lid of the covenant box. Covering. The broken covenant inside the box is crying out to God, who is above it, saying, "You've got to kill them. If you're just, you have to kill them. They've broken me into a thousand, thousand pieces." And God says, "It's all right." The blood is covering. "You are to slaughter the young bull before the Lord, and then Aaron's priests, Aaron's sons, the priests, etc." So, anybody can bring it, a variety of possible offerings, depending on ability, night and day, 24 hours a day. You kill it. You put your hand on the sheep's head and take a knife and slit its throat. How costly is sin? Everything, everything. The priest then takes some of the blood and splashes it against the sides of the altar. And, a little question here, "and at the entrance to the tent of meeting?" I think that's the correct reading. I happen to have the NIV here, and it says, "the altar at the entrance." Well, the altar isn't at the entrance. So there were that beautiful, beautiful woven tapestry is the entrance to the tabernacle. The blood is splashed. How do you get in this place? Through the blood. And then it is splashed on the altar. "They will arrange the pieces," this is verse 8, "including the head and the fat." One of the things we're going to see throughout here is, God really likes fat. I'm so glad. Fat is special. For people who needed rapid energy, fat was a good thing. My dad lived to be 101, and he collected the fat off all of our plates. I was preaching in Romania and had finished fairly late at night, not because I was long-winded, but because the service began late. And they took me to the home where I was going to be staying. And the lady of the house met me. She was dressed in traditional Romanian garb, beautiful woven dresses, and a tunic over top. And she had a tray in her hands. And on the tray were arranged in a tier form these beautiful white squares. I thought, hmm, candy. Grabbed one and popped it into my mouth. And she said, "Have another." And I did. I'm not quite sure how I got it down, but I got it down. But it was a great gift, precious. We, of course, go to the very opposite extreme. And, but they... "Head and the fat on the wood that is burning on the altar. You are to wash the internal organs and the legs with water, and the priest is to burn all of it on the altar." It is a burnt offering, a food offering, an aroma pleasing to the Lord. Now, I've often thought, the Lord must have different olfactory nerves than I do. To me, the smell of burnt flesh is not a pleasant smell. But to God, it is. Why? Because of what it symbolizes. And so what is its purpose? What does the whole burnt offering symbolize? How is it that God sees it as an atonement offering? What the whole burnt offering's purpose is, is to symbolize total dedication. "I am yours, body, soul, and spirit, all yours, day and night, all the way." Whole. This is what we're talking about. We're not talking about here. "Well, we've got to do something about my sin." We're going to talk about that. But that's not what we're talking about here. What we're talking about here is, "I'm yours." And the only way I can be yours is through the blood. But I'm yours. This is not an attempt to manipulate God. This is a statement by the offerer. "I am yours." No ifs, no ands, no buts. I think this is original to me, although I've discovered in the past that most of my original thoughts come from somebody else. "I am yours, without a limit and without arrival." That's what this offering is about. Charlie?
I know these sacrifices happen morning and evening, but as an individual, how often were they bringing these sacrifices? Are they bringing with... If I brought one out, say, this morning?
Whenever. Now, again, what you would do in terms of your slaughtering the animal, that's, I think, going to happen at various points during the day, but the animal will be put on the altar in the morning and the evening. If you turn back to chapter 7, we get a little more information. Chapter Leviticus 7, verse 12. Excuse me, verse 8. Here's the information about it has to be, the fire has to be burning all the time. "Give Aaron and his sons this command; these are the regulations for the burnt offering. The burnt offering is to remain on the altar hearth throughout the night till morning, and the fire must be kept burning on the altar." He then changes clothes and removes the ashes. "But the fire," verse 12, "must be kept burning; it must not go out." That's stated again in verse 13. "The fire must be kept burning on the altar continuously." So that's when the offering is made. Oh, it is 6, I'm sorry. I overlooked the verse 7 at the top of the page, chapter 7. Yes, it's 6, sorry. Chapter 6 of verse 8 and following. "So why is it a sweet aroma? It's a sweet aroma because it is an expression of that total dedication of me, of you, of us, to Him, and that smells good to God. And that's why later on, he will say, 'I will not smell your offerings.'" Why? Because they're lies. The people are not dedicated to him. They're trying to buy him, they're trying to manipulate him. And God says, "It stinks." But if indeed it does represent the whole dedication of my life, of your life, it smells good to God. Yes?
My Bible has some study notes in it.
Yes.
It's really ironic, this one note says, "if the whole sacrifice was to be burned up, it's therefore sometimes called a holocaust offering."
Oh, yes.
Because hol, H-O-L, means whole, and cost means to burn.
Yes, yes. The modern Jews say, "We are the world's whole burnt offering. We've died for the world." So when it is called the Holocaust, that's Latin, by the way. When it's called the Holocaust, that's what they are saying. They're saying, "We are the whole burnt offering for the world." All right, anything more you want to talk about on the whole burnt offering? Again, forgive me, but I'm going to keep harping on this. This is not an attempt to buy God off. Whenever they thought it was, there would be a prophet around the corner saying, "No! No." Yes, Todd?
So is this fire going 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
Yep. 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 The fire. So Pentecost? Tongues of fire? Fire on the altar? Yes. All right. We're moving fast. The grain offering, chapter two. Now, the grain offerings were usually brought with other offerings. Brought with the whole burnt offering, brought with the peace offering. It was not normal that it would be brought by itself. It could be. But it was usually brought with others. It is a gift of gratitude. Again, if you remember, I grouped it with fellowship offerings. It's thankfulness. The offering is to be of the finest flour. They're to pour olive oil on it and put incense on it. Now, that kind of bothers me because these loaves are going to be given to the priests. I wonder how bread tastes with incense on it? Of course, it's unleavened bread, so it's pretty tasteless. So maybe a little incense would help it out. The priest will take a handful of the flour and the oil, together with all the incense, and burn this. Yes, I think this portion is to be burnt, and there's where the incense comes in, as a memorial offering. The note, the word that is translated memorial can also have the idea of representative. The word is zikaron. Z-K-R is where you get remember. But it stands there, again, to symbolize, symbolize all the rest of your gifts, all the rest of the things that you give to God from your heart. In everything, give thanks. So that you are thanking God for the grain that He has allowed you and your efforts to produce. Remember that the second sacrifice after Passover is called first fruits. This is the feast that took place at the time of Pentecost. Passover is at the beginning of the barley harvest. First fruits, or Pentecost, takes place at the beginning of the wheat harvest. And you are to bring your first fruits as a grain offering. It's thus both stewardship, yes? "Lord, You've given this to me, this barley. But I'm also believing You for the wheat harvest." So it's both thanksgiving and faith. Verse three, "The rest of the grain offering belongs to Aaron and his sons. It is a most holy part of the food offerings presented to the Lord." Now, the pagan believes that he is feeding the God. He's giving the God lunch. The way to a God's heart is through his stomach. These are called food offerings. But as here, you're not really feeding God. You're actually feeding the priests. But the idea is, in a world where you're not sure where your next meal is coming from, to give God food is an expensive offering. When Jesus says, "Give us this day our daily bread," that was a serious prayer. So here, "So if you bring a grain offering baked in the oven," verse four. "If your grain offering is prepared on a griddle," verse five. Verse seven, "If your grain offering is cooked in a pan." So again, a lot of options. God is not saying, "Do it this way. This is the only way it'll work." In a world where ritual is the means of manipulating the gods, you've got to do it right. God says, "You've got some options here in terms of the way you express your thanksgiving." Now, again, I've talked about this before. One of the driving forces in religion in the ancient world is the whole question of fertility. How do I manipulate the gods to ensure the fertility of my crops? The fertility of my wife? How do I make the gods give me this priceless power? No. God has given you the grain. Now you return some of it to Him as an expression of thanks, as an expression of faith that God is going to give you the good harvest that you need. I think it's fascinating that first fruits is in the middle. You've already gotten the barley. Has it been a pretty good harvest? Well, great. Has it been a rotten harvest? Oh, what about wheat? And again, there it is. Thank you for what you've given, and I trust you for what you are going to give. Verse eight, "Bring the grain offering made of these things to the Lord; present it to the priests, who will take it to the altar." He will take out the memorial portion, the representative portion, from the grain offering, burn it on the altar as a food offering and aroma pleasing to the Lord. "The rest of the grain offering belongs to Aaron and his sons; it is a most holy portion." Now, it's interesting. No leaven or honey. Why not? Gary?
I was going to ask a question.
Go ahead.
He doesn't say how much to bring.
No, no. Again, that's up to you. It's, I need to be careful here, but the tithe is not a requirement for us as Christians. It's a guideline. And if a millionaire gives a tithe, that's not enough. If somebody who is dirt poor gives a tithe, that's astounding. And so it is here. If you've got a lot of grain to give, give it. If you don't have much, give what you've got. Now, yeast. Well, I like yeast bread. Unleavened bread is pretty tasteless. What's going on? Well, in the Old Testament, yeast... unleavened bread will stay around a long time. Bread with yeast in it is going to be growing green stuff pretty quick. And there it is. Throughout, throughout the Bible, really, Old and New Testament, yeast is a symbol of decay, of fermentation, of destruction. Don't do it. Don't do it. Honey, on the other hand, is a little more difficult to figure out why it's forbidden. Perhaps it is forbidden because it seems as though it was pretty common in pagan sacrifices. You want to get the God's meal a little bit upped. And you do that with the honey. So perhaps that's the reason that it is to separate our symbolic offerings from those offerings that are designed to get at the God. But notice something else. Verse 13. "Season all your grain offerings with salt. Do not leave the salt of the covenant of your God out of your grain offerings. Add salt to all your offerings." Hmm. Well... What does salt do? It preserves. It prevents decay. It's also extremely valuable. In most ancient cultures, salt and gold were valued at the same weight. If you've ever been on a salt-free diet, you'll understand why. But there it is, again. Do you see the symbolic force that's being given all the way through here? What is there in my life that breeds decay? Not just another birthday, but what is there in my life that preserves my faith, that strengthens it, preserves my dedication to God, draws me closer to Him, as opposed to that which pushes me away from Him? So that's the grain offering. Now, again, what I'm hammering on here is, these are not attempts to make God forgive me. These are not attempts to make Him friendly toward me. They're expressions of, number one, whole dedication, complete dedication. And I think that's so significant as the very first of them. If you want to experience the power of the blood in your life, it's not going to happen unless you're wholly His. And then, thanks for what God has given. Thanks for your fertility blessings. Whether they are large or small, whether it's a good year or a bad year, I'm thanking you for what you've given and trusting you for what you're going to give. That's the way to live. That's the way to live. All right, well, we've got about eight minutes yet. Let's dive into the third one. It's often referred to as the peace offering, the shalom offering. Again, I've talked to you about this in the past and as long as you allow me, I'll keep talking to you about it. Shalom is much more than peace. The three consonants have to do with wholeness, particularly in relationships. Do you know what you do when you pay a bill? You pacify it. You shalom it. Why? Because when the bill was not paid, something is incomplete. But when you pay it, it's a done deal. You've shalom-ed it. So what's going on? When we talk about peace, there is a wholeness in our relationship. It's not an absence of conflict. It is nothing separating us, nothing dividing us. That's what Jesus means when He says, "My peace I live with you, not as the world gives, give I unto you." All the world can hope to give us is a temporary absence of conflict. Jesus can put us together. In the same way, those three letters have to do with health. Today, on the streets of Jerusalem, two people meet, they will say, "Mashalomaka." "How are you? What is your well-being? What is your condition?" Again, everything is functioning together. There's not something hanging. So what is a shalom offering? It's again, a thank offering. It's a thank offering to God that He bless His holy name. that He, He bless His holy name, has put Himself and us together. The sin that separated us from Him has been dealt with, and we are at home. At home in His arms. At home in His lap. At home at His table. God says, "Welcome home, child." And this offering is about thanks. Oh, God. Thank you. Thank you for what you have done. Thank you that you have reconciled me to you. Notice again, it's not making God reconcile. "I'm going to give you this offering, and you've got to be reconciled with me." No. You have reconciled yourself to me, and I want to thank you. I want to give you lavish gifts to tell you how thankful I am. Again, why do we go to church? Well, God'll get us if we don't. No, no. It's to say, "Thank you. Thank you for the cross. Thank you. Thank you for Jesus. Thank you for the Holy Spirit. Thank you." This is a bugaboo for me because I've spent a lot of time sitting on platforms. It really bothers me. It's a good thing I don't sit on the platform all the time. But it bothers me to hear people, or to watch people saying, "Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. Let the earth hear His voice. Praise the Lord." What? We ought all be grinning. "Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Let the earth hear His voice." Well, that's free. But there is sacrifice. You're to offer an animal from the herd, whether male or female. You're to present before the Lord an animal without defect. You're to lay your hand on the head of the offering, slaughter it at the entrance to the tent of meeting. Then Aaron's sons, the priests, will splash the blood against the sides of the altar, no longer at the entrance, but at the sides of the altar. From the fellowship offering, you're to bring a food offering to the Lord, the internal organs and all the fat that is connected to them, both kidneys with the fat on them near the loins, and the long lobe of the liver, which you'll remove with the kidneys. Then Aaron's sons are to burn it on the altar, on top of the burnt offering that's lying on the burning wood. It's a food offering, an aroma-pleasing to the Lord. That's from the herd, that's cattle. If you offer an animal from the flock as a fellowship offering, you're to offer a male or a female without defect. If you offer a lamb, you're to present it before the Lord, et cetera. Same as before. Verse 12, if your offering is a goat, you're to present it before the Lord. Lay your hand on its head, same as before. Verse 16. The priests shall burn them on the altar as a food offering, a pleasing aroma. All the fat is the Lord's. God decides what's His and what isn't, not you. And what is best is His. This is a lasting ordinance for the generations to come, wherever you live. You must not eat any fat or any blood. In both these cases, this is what you ate from the animal because you got its strength when you drank its blood or ate its fat. You were taking its strength into you. And God says, "No, you're not. No, you're not. This is not magical. This is not ritualism. It is symbolic of what I am doing for you." The fat and the entrails are burned. The blood is poured out. And you eat the rest with the priests. We won't take the time to look at it, but let me give you the reference. Deuteronomy, chapter 12, verses 17 to 19, tells us that every three years, you eat the fellowship offering at home with your servants, with the Levites who happen to live in your village. It's party time. Again, it is a thank offering, and God participates in it. He's thankful too. So I just want to hammer on you for one more time. These first three offerings, the whole bird offering, the grain offering, the fellowship offering. I prefer that to peace offering. For way too long, people have said, "Well, you, you give this offering in order to make peace with God." No. You give this offering to thank Him for the peace He has given. That's all the difference in the world. And it's party time. Thank God for what He's done for us. Praise His holy name. So again, I say, the location of this in the whole covenant document is very significant. God wants to live in our midst. How is that possible? Only if we are sold out to Him, receiving what He has done for us in reconciling Himself to us and rejoicing in thanksgiving. Questions, comments? No?
For some relationship with unleavened bread, the fact that Exodus, they went with unleavened bread, was later related to these offerings?
Yes, I think so. The question was, is this unleavened bread related to the Exodus? And I think there's no doubt. Again, they took unleavened bread because they needed to carry it on the journey, and they didn't want it to spoil. But I'm sure that there is this memory because that's such a significant part of Hebrew religion. Charlie?
For the shalom offering, you mentioned its wholeness in a relationship. You said it's not lack of conflict. There's a second half to that idea that I missed. It's not lack of conflict.
It's not lack of conflict, it is genuine reconciliation.
What's the symbolism of the fact?
Well, I think, I think in the ancient world, to eat the fat of the animal was to eat its strength, to eat its abundance, and you were getting that for yourself. And God says, "No, that's mine." So yes, yes. Anything else?
It's a lot of blood and fire.
A lot of blood and fire. Yes, yes, yes. And, and we'll, we'll talk about that. Chapter 17, which is really the closing of all this, is all about blood. And there it is again. The fire, the, the, the life is in the blood. And the fire that consumes, but like the burning bush, consumes without destroying. That's, that's what I tried to say to budding pastors. It's possible that the fire will burn you up if you let it. If you think you are the fuel, it'll burn you up. But if He is the fuel, then you could burn and burn and burn and not be consumed. Nancy?
Is your connection, do you think, with this? I was doing a little study on what, you know, where it says in the New Testament about Holy Spirit and fire?
Yeah.
And what I found was, fire, even in the New Testament, is talking about sin and burning it up and all that. Do you think that's connected to this?
Oh, unquestionably. The question is, is fire and burning up sin, as we see it in the New Testament, is that connected to this? Absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's growing right out of this, that the, the sin must be consumed. But we don't have to be consumed. We can be set alight and burn for His glory. Anything else? Okay. We got almost through three chapters. All right, we'll go on next week and talk about the sin and the guilt offerings.